Thomas J. Smith, Council Chambers at 4:30. And I think we're going to skip the regular agenda and go right to the discussion items so the Police Department can do their presentation on the K-9 program. We'll do that first.
Thank you this evening. Myself and Officer Smith are here today to present to you a proposal by us. It's not so much proposal to you, but for the community. We're going to try and re-initiate our K-9 program at the Police Department. Several months back, Officer Smith had taken an interest in the K-9 program and had brought some information to the administration at the department wanting to have a K-9 for our department, and he's willing to be the handler for that. With that information, we've put together a presentation and have basically presented it to a leadership group here in town that does some fundraising. And we're going to continue on and move forward with that initiative and try to reach a goal to fund this program for three to five years, initially starting with three. But we're going to go through a presentation here, a little bit about it, and if you have any questions at the end, we'll be happy to answer those questions. Like I said, Officer Smith is going to do part of the presentation, then I'll talk a little bit about the financing of it and how the funds all come together. Officer Smith?
Hello, everyone. I'm Officer Smith. Got a little background here. Been an officer since 2007, been tactical response unit for the last four years, water rescue team for six, and been in charge of the Honor Guard for the last year. Military background, been Illinois Army National Guard since 2003. I've had two deployments. All right, with the Bronson PD, K-9 history, and past, we've had three. As you can see, the first two Canines we've had, we've had two different officers that were the handlers. That's kind of puts out there that the K-9 can be handled by another officer if needed. So if I do get deployed again, or if I go to somewhere else, which probably won't be the case, another officer will step in my place and take over the E-K-9 program. And the recent K-9 is Officer, or Officer Blumer was the handler with the K-9 Reno. All right. The community need for the K-9 has different, well, multiple different, say, various specialties for Canines. One for the, for our community would probably be the dual purpose, and that consists of the narcotics detection, tracking, and defense. Just below that, we have what it's all considered that can actually do. Narcotics detection, drug interdiction, tracking defense, crowd control, and presence patrol, and the building article searches. And we'll get into those here in a little bit. With our K-9 in the county, if we do go with the program, get the K-9, we'll be the only K-9 in the county. And that is for more immediate and greater availability. We won't have to wait for state prison K-9 team to come up, or other agencies around the area. Narcotics detection and drug interdiction. With the patrol K-9, be vehicles, structure, and area searches, the types of contraband that can be used to locate marijuana, cocaine, methamphetamine, heroin, and all those, some other controlled substances. The DEA certified, that would actually be if we do get the funds to go ahead and do an extra training for the DEA. The DEA will train the K-9 and myself and actually provide us with drugs that are not common, or commonly seen in this community, just in case that drug does come into town, we can stop it beforehand, before it gets a greater problem, let's just say. There's multiple situations where we can use tracking with the K-9, fleeing suspects, the missing children, adults. Fleeing suspects is if somebody happens to run from a vehicle and they are, say, a danger to the community, we can actually have the K-9 come in, take a scent from that person that was in that vehicle, and then that K-9 can track that person. Defense. If a certain situation comes to hand, if there's an armed subject and he's a threat to an officer, another officer of the community, or the dog itself, the dog can actually be used as a defense tool. Crowd control. K-9, just its presence in the area will probably either deter some situations, or actually if some people do see a K-9, they're like, "Well, I don't want to be anywhere near that thing. I'm going to go home and live another day." So, presence patrol, again, deterrents of crime. We can use these at major events in the community. Just having that K-9 there will make people think twice about doing something criminal or unethical. Building article searches. We can let a K-9 go through a building and actually locate somebody that is possibly hiding in the building. Also, if we do have a subject inside somewhere and he's not wanting to come out, we can send the K-9 in. Also, on a crime scene, there's evidence that possibly won't be found by the officer in the naked eye. The dog can go in and actually search and hit on things that an officer probably won't be able to see, or is hidden. And for the example is a gun, knife, and striking instrument. Tactical deployment, with me being on the tactical response unit, we can actually take the K-9 and myself and go to a tactical response K-9 school and get that K-9 certified in tactical situations. If the tactical response unit is called out, then the situation is extremely dangerous, and the K-9 tool will actually help prevent further damage or loss of life if there is a certain situation that can happen. And then, K-9 demonstrations, everybody's favorite. Again, we can do pretty much for any organization that wants to see what the dog can do, we can do demonstration for him. Also gives the community a view of what the dog can do, and actually get that dog out there to where everybody wants to see the dog in action. So there's two different breeds that I'm in looking for. What I prefer is the German Shepherd. The size and presence of it is more, I'd say, more commanding, more demanding. Presence patrol of, other than the Belgian Malinois, which we'll get in the next slide. And also, with the German Shepherds, from my experience with other handlers and their, and other breeders, the German Shepherd is actually, can turn off work. So, in a normal setting, off duty, the German Shepherd, Sherp, excuse me, German Shepherd can actually act as a pet and be sociable. The next breed of K-9 is the Belgian Malinois. They're kind of the cousin of the German Shepherd. They're smaller, leaner, and they're actually a lot hyper than the German Shepherd. Some of the handlers that have the Belgian Malinois always tell me that they never shut off. They're always wanting to work. And with the sociable part from, or part of them is, they really don't pay attention to anybody unless there's something they can sniff on it. All right, the work-life of K-9, five to eight years. Usually after five to six, the K-9 kind of gets burned out and kind of loses its ability to perform. Lifespan of both breeds is approximately 11 years, and the K-9 will actually live with me, so I don't have to kennel it up at some, somewhere where I'm off duty and actually go home and be part of the family. All right, training. The federal mandate for K-9 training in law enforcement is 16 hours a month, and that is a minimum. That training has to be documented, and the training that consists is narcotics detection, bite work, and tracking and obedience.
That's a great picture. It's obedience.
Yeah. The narcotics detection, again, if the DEA certified, I can have access to drugs that we don't commonly see in the community. Bite work, we do have a full bite suit, so I'm sure if anybody wants to feel a bite, they can do so without getting injured. And then, tracking and obedience, that'll be just the addition to those training subjects.
Officer Smith has done a lot of work in looking at the dogs that he is preferring that we get, and we've taken that into consideration. He's also looked and shopped around at different companies that basically sell Canines and offer the training, and we've boiled it down to K-9 Working Dogs International. And they have like a three-week training course there for Officer Smith to go to. Once we purchase the dog, he'll go there and train on-site with the dog, and they also do some work with the outfitting of the vehicle and making sure everything's good to go when he comes back. There's no cost, no additional, I guess, no additional work for us to do back here, getting the car ready to go for the K-9. It's all done there, and part of that cost. The tuition cost there, as you see, is $21.95, and it, like I said, on-site lodging. And the K-9 LEAK grant that you see there, there is grant applications for some equipment that we can apply for once we purchase the dog there, so that would be down the road. And of course, the vehicle insert package. The total, I broke it down here, the approximate cost is basically $22,000. I'm rounding up because as we move further along in the process, of course, as we go deeper into it, the price may go up for the dog. $14,500 for the K-9, basically $3,500 for the vehicle insert and the system inside to open the dog, which includes air conditioning and heat back there for the dog for in the summertime to keep the dog cooled down when he's in the car. And $21.95 for the training itself, and then there's an import charge because the dogs for this company come from Germany, and that's the cost of that charge. So basically, it all adds up to $22,000. Additional optional equipment, basically, the collar will come with it, of course, but the vest, the Kevlar vest, the bulletproof vest for the dog is anywhere from $900 to $1,400, and I always caution on the high side, and of course, the collar was free. But I included the $1,500 in there. Handler's uniforms for Officer Smith. As you see, the uniform he has on has some polyester in it, and what you know, what we know will happen is the minute he starts working with the dog, the hair gets on it. It's not as comfortable for him to work with, and plus, he has things that he will have in his cargo pockets and things of that nature for the dog to work with on the scene, either reward the dog, or leashes, or things of that nature. So we'll change his uniform a bit to a different style, and we talk about the outer load-bearing vest, which basically brings everything up here, which gives him access to his pockets down here a little bit better than what we have on. So there's some options there, and that's the reason for the change of the uniform. It would just be an additional cost for us to initially purchase those uniforms. Any expenses after that for replacement would probably come out of our budget. Overtime compensation, which is a big figure. We have to provide because Officer Smith will have the dog at his residence and care for the dog in the off-duty hours, not just during, when he's working. He'll have the dog at his house. He'll have to have a kennel there and feed the dog, take the dog out for the bathroom, make sure it's taken care of at his residence. And we've checked with several other law enforcement agencies on what the requirement is, and there's some mandates there for eight hours per pay period, which is eight hours every two weeks, basically 16 hours a month. So I've done some figures here. For the initial cost for his overtime is $26,100 for the first three years, and then for the total of five years would be $44,500. And I included in there just an estimate of a 2% annual salary increase, just to try to make sure I was a little more accurate with my figures. So if we're looking for the initial startup for just the overtime is $26,100. And this explains a little bit about the food, veterinary care, the kennel at his house, and boarding. A lot, I know during, when we had the other Canines before, like Reno and Kilo and them, local businesses around here are very generous in our community that provide for us the concrete slab they'll provide, they provide the panels for the kennel, the dog food, I think it was Hy-Vee that provided that before, but we'll try to solicit donations for those things also. And I think All Goods handled the veterinary care for the previous Canines, so we would seek those out also. I've broken this up, or I figured this out, total funds for the initial three-year goal, like I said, is basically $22,000 for the initial purchase and training of the dog. I put in there $22,500 for the additional equipment and uniforms, and then $26,100 for the overtime compensation. So the minimum we're going to shoot for is basically $50,400 to get the program started for the first three years, and then we'll look for additional funding once we get it, once we get it initiated. The total funds for the five years is basically $70,000. I included in there some, and it's a little on the low side, that $12,500, $1,250 for continuing certification and training, because it may cost more than that, but that's on the low side. Approximately $70,000 would be the total for the five years of this program. And if you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer.
I don't understand the overtime. The officer's assigned to a regular shift, is that right?
Yes, he is.
But then, he might be called in for the K-9 on an overtime basis.
That's correct. That would be additional. When he's called in from off-duty to come in and utilize the dog, that would be in addition to what you're seeing up here. What this hears for Mr. Fleming in council is that the figure, that eight hours per pay period is basically for the dog's care, to make sure the dog's cared for at home, because he's taking care of the property which belongs to the city, if that makes sense. He's basically the caretaker of the animal for those eight hours every two weeks. And that's basically 14 days, you know, basically a little over an hour a day.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Dog is trained in English?
I think the last one was in German, and this one maybe also, since it's coming from Germany, I would assume.
So, how's your German?
Right now, it's not very good.
We're hoping to three weeks down there, he'd learn some German, maybe.
Yeah, where is the training center? Where is it?
Langford, Kansas. Or actually, Longford, Kansas.
Longford, Kansas, yeah.
Okay.
So basically, we're trying to get the word out there, and you'll hear about us going around town. I already have a group that called me today and wants me to come and present there over the next couple of months, and so we're going to be looking for donations to hopefully reach our goal and get this program re-initiated for the city.
What do you need from us?
Nothing other than just your awareness of what we're trying to do.
Our blessing.
That would be it. Any other? Good? Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. You guys talked about the DEA certification and also tactical. I don't know if that's, are those like optional?
Those are optional.
Optional trainings? Would you, I guess, then, like, what would be estimated costs and time for that? Or is it ongoing as well?
It would be ongoing.
The DEA certification, you certify every two years. I don't know exact price for that. A lot of the, I like the tactical response unit, that'd actually be a one-time training, and then we train on it as my, or myself throughout the years. The DEA's certification from, right here, from other handlers, is that it's more of a, DEA wants certified, so if the DEA does come into the community, they can actually use my, or utilize my dog. So it's more of a, like a federal grant, kind of. It probably won't come out too much of our pocket, so.
Are those two things something you would want to do?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. I think it'd be, I'm really excited. I guess, you know, when people want to make donations, where can they go to make a donation?
Well, right now, and the chief and I just talked about that today, we haven't laid down, we're looking for a, I guess, a, I guess, what am I looking for? 501(c)(3) organization that'll manage the account for us to get us through that process and manage those funds for us. They just wouldn't come to the city, and we haven't started that. We're going to get out there. We haven't received any money, so once that happens, we'll probably go a direction like that. And you talk about the certification. Annually, there's certifications, or there's certifications for the dog to show performance that he will need to have for the certificate, for the dog to work, and in case there is a bite or something like that, he can show, you know, the dog has performed and responds as it needs to, in accordance with its initial training.
Right.
So there's certifications that way.
So is there additional insurance coverage that needs to be with this, or will it fit under our current umbrella coverage?
We haven't even talked about that. I feel it would probably come under our current policy, but the chief and I can talk about that, for sure. Additionally, you had had the question about the tactical response unit, his training with the tactical response unit. It's basically a group that's made up of Des Moines County officers, sheriff's deputies, and police officers here, and we would probably discuss that training fee with them, because they're going to be utilizing it together for that unit.
Okay.
Do you currently bring in a K-9 unit occasionally?
We do, we do have one that's available by a private person. He charges by the hour, and he comes from Mount Pleasant.
I see.
And we do that, and we also utilize the ones from the Iowa State Penitentiary to do like the sniffs out at the schools and stuff like that.
We have to let us know when you get the, everything set up, so we can spread the word. I'd like to, at least.
You bet. We will. We will. Thank you for your time.
Good program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, counsel?
No.
Jim, do you have anything to say about this?
Oh, hi, Jim. Excuse me.
I didn't make it.
Thank you, Major and Officer Smith.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto our regular agenda. First couple items we'll deal with at the council meeting. Eric, you want to talk about the 1417 Tool Street, the sale of property, please?
Map of the property. This is a property we acquired through the 657A process. It is located on Tool Street between Oak and Flora Street. Is a property that does need quite a bit of work. We have received three bids on it currently, with a high bid of $5,000 at this point. We do have a sheet on our Facebook page just detailing information on the property, property summary details, and then a summary of the rehab that is to be completed at the property as well. Does need to be cleaned out, plumbing upgrades, electrical wiring, HVAC, windows, roof. So there is quite a bit to do there, but with, I guess, most of our recent properties, they come in a condition that there is a lot of work to be done, and that's expected by the purchasers. It is a four-bedroom house, three bedrooms upstairs, one bedroom on the main floor, with one full bathroom on the main floor as well. So as I mentioned, we do have a current high bid of $5,000, so we'd expect, and two other bids, we'd expect at least that $5,000, who has done other work in Burlington as well. Any questions on the property or sale?
Another live auction coming then?
Yep.
Okay, question?
No.
No?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, next one is interesting. Selling a portion of South 14th Street right-of-way.
This is an unusual right-of-way that we've had questions from the neighbors from time to time, just due to maintenance and use. It is a city, or street right-of-way, 14th Street right-of-way, that also contains an alley just north of Harrison, halfway up the block. The alley doesn't continue all the way to Barrett, but dead ends and comes back out to 14th Street. And the property owners there have all gotten together and wish to actually own a part of that right-of-way that covers the alley portion. There would be an easement, access easement over the alley, and there are some utilities there. They did a plat of survey, so we have a better legal description showing each property getting the adjacent right-of-way there. Would maintain a minimum 60-foot right-of-way through that street, which is our typical street right-of-way, so the city wouldn't be losing any necessary right-of-way there, and I guess they'd be responsible for any maintenance within that area. Just an unusual situation. I don't know of any others where we have a street and an alley in the same right-of-way in town, but hopefully it'll clear up some of the confusion as far as maintenance. We've had nuisances out there where the adjacent property owner wasn't maintaining, even though they're responsible to the center of the street, and they questioned why there's an alley there, and so hopefully that'll clear that up and make the maintenance of the property a little easier to understand going forward.
So, does that mean the alley goes away then?
Well, the public alley would go away, but there is a 15-foot access easement on the property for each of those, each of those individuals adjacent to it. They'd be responsible to take their trash out to the street. I'm not sure which side had been mentioned, but they wouldn't be able to bring it to that alley there.
Will they be allowed to build on that property?
They couldn't on the 15-foot area, and then there is still a portion remaining, just depending on the setback, if they could have a small shed or something there.
I would caution you on that. There's private lateral lines that go from those houses on the, a couple of those houses on the east side of the 14th Street that go to that alley and that, or go to the sewer in the alley.
And looking at it, the width of this is, goes from 31 feet at the north and 39 to the south. There is a 15-foot access easement, and then I believe a 20-foot utility easement, and based on our setbacks, there probably wouldn't be any room to actually construct there, so.
Say that again.
There's a 15-foot access easement and a 20-foot utility easement, and based on our setbacks, our front yard setbacks are typically 25 feet. The buildable area goes away essentially then, so there shouldn't be any construction there based on that.
Should not be.
No.
Okay. I didn't hear that.
Okay. That's pretty routine. Okay?
Yep.
I don't know. I still think, I still think the folks on the other side of the street need to be notified and explain that they have a utility coming off of their house that goes under that property, and if they need to access that property, they're not going to have an easement to do that. They're, that's, that would be a concern of mine if I lived in those houses, and I would imagine some of those folks don't even know that their sewers, that their private lateral sewer is attached to that, to that line.
Actually, and I can clarify, we, looking at the conditions again, we did originally have the 20-foot wide utility easement. It is over the entire portion of this alley right-of-way. So there is a utility easement over the entire portion of it.
Right.
Originally, it did state 20 feet, but that had been changed, so that the entire portion is a utility easement.
So that takes care of what Councilman Scott was talking about?
Condition, condition number three, yeah, for access to the utilities there, and maybe that needs to be clarified a little bit more.
Let's see, it's, it's 39 feet wide on one end and 32 foot on the other. If there's a 20-foot easement...
Yeah, I misspoke there. Originally, we'd talked about a 20-foot easement, but it is an easement over the entire portion.
Over the entire portion.
Yeah, if you look at number...
Everything that's got hash marks on it, there's an easement there.
The hash marks indicate the access easement. The utility easement's over the entire portion. The access is just for driving on that alley, but the utility easement's over the entire portion.
Over the entire, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry for that.
Yeah, it does say that on item three. Maintain over the entire portion of the right-of-way for utility maintenance.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
That takes care of that. Okay, anything else?
No.
Good? All right. All right. Then we have vacating an alley at thirteen twenty, a portion of an alley right-of-way at thirteen twenty-five Iowa Street. We did sell a lot on Iowa Street, just.
Yeah, this is in the neighborhood, neighborhood of thirteen twenty-one Iowa Street, which is just to the north of here. We had an individual at thirteen twenty-five Iowa Street come in asking to buy that lot that wasn't adjacent to his house. I did inquire about the alley right-of-way there, and there are no utilities or issues with vacating that. It does drop down quite a bit to the east, but this would be vacating the alley directly behind the property at thirteen twenty-five Iowa. Just did go to the planning commission, and they voted four to one to approve vacating the described alley based on that status as a dead-end, untraveled alleyway, with the topography limiting access to the east.
Okay.
This would allow him to either expand his garage or put in a paved parking area there for his private vehicles.
Okay. Good on that one, counsel?
I am.
Is there a reason why it's just that one portion and not the whole alley?
No other property owners desired ownership of it at this time.
And you're not wanting to get rid of it?
We would like to. It drops down probably twenty or thirty feet from this point to the east, and it's just a, a larger ravine there.
So, are you looking at doing that as you, as time moves on?
It's something we'll continue to contact property owners and see their interest in it, yeah.
So, are there, I didn't see that. Are there utility things there too?
No utilities in the alley.
Okay. Great. Okay. You're good?
Yep.
Consideration of resolution adopting the Des Moines County Hazard Mitigation Plan. This, who's?
Emory Ellington with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission here to kind of go over.
Just go to this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I'm Emory Ellington. I'm from the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the Des Moines County Multi-Jurisdictional Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan. It's quite a name, but, let's see here.
Sit down on the side.
Yeah, looks like it.
Yeah, point it towards the computer over here.
Oh, that'd probably be why.
There you go.
Okay. So, just kind of a brief introduction. What hazard mitigation is, it's the effort to reduce loss of life and property damage by reducing the impact of potential disasters. So, there's kind of four things that go into it. Being prepared for the disaster, responding if there is a disaster, resiliency, and then recovery. So, you can kind of think of the different disasters that we can potentially have here in Des Moines County. So, sometimes you think about something like a natural, like a tornado or a flood. They can also be man-made. So, you might have hazardous material spill, things of that nature. So, the plan itself, it's, it's required for each county in the United States in order to be eligible for funding for hazard mitigation to have a current plan that has been adopted and written. They're updated every five years. The last update for Des Moines County was in two thousand ten, and so this update is the two thousand fifteen update. Adopting the plan does not require any expenditure of funds by the adopting jurisdictions, something that just has to be adopted by resolution for each county, again, if they wish to remain, remain eligible. So, an example of a project that has been done in the past is several communities in Des Moines County have added a safe room. I think Burlington did one at the, at the high school a couple of years ago. And again, that was made possible by the fact that the county had on record, had adopted the plan. And then each, each jurisdiction has to. So, City of Burlington participated along with other communities in the county. And it's a pretty large document, so I didn't bring the entire thing, but it has pretty much five sections that I'll just kind of give you a brief overview. So, there was public input to the process. In putting the plan together, we had a steering committee composed of representatives from each of the jurisdictions. And then we also met with city staff. So, we met with Public Works, planning development here for the City of Burlington, because there is a section of the plan where you do mention specific either hazards to a community. You know, communities are different. So, here in Burlington, you know, we're gonna have more of a risk from flood than maybe other communities in the county. And then there's also a public input meeting that was held at the Public Library on August nineteenth. So, again, you have the opportunity for the public to be involved in the process. Community profile section of the document, it's basically just giving a lot of background to the county, different communities. And so, that's the first section of the document. Second section is, and this is where the steering committee came into play, is we ranked, well, we identified and then ranked the hazards that are a threat to Des Moines County and kind of using that scoring matrix, because as you go through the plan, that's part of it. So, here in Des Moines County, for example, we don't have a risk as much from earthquake, and you can see it was number seventeen, as we do from other hazards. So, that's where it kind of comes into play, where we'll have a different plan than maybe a community in California would, or a community in Florida. The third part of the plan is mitigation strategies. Now, each community adopt, this is what you'll be adopting with the plan, is each community has these strategies. And again, these don't require any expenditure of funds, but it gives the community direction to pursue with their mitigation strategy. So, this one, for example, develop, implement different hazard education programs. And then I have the full list, if you are interested in seeing what ones were picked for the City of Burlington. And again, that was done in coordination with city staff. And then here's the timeline. So, this was all started back in January two thousand fifteen. Steering committee meetings were held basically January through May. The plan was completed, the first draft, in August. We had the public review. It was sent for FEMA for review and approval, and FEMA did approve it on November fifth, two thousand fifteen. And the last step is you just have each participating jurisdiction adopted by resolution. So, that's why, why we're here today. So, if you have any questions.
Where is the actual copy that someone could look at?
The actual copy, we can.
We did place that on our website under the Development Department. I can show quickly here. If you go to the city's website, BurlingtonIowa.org, and go to the Community Development Department, there is a link on the left-hand side of the page, Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan. So, if you just click on that, the two hundred or three hundred-page document will take a while, but it'll open, and you can review the entire document there.
Okay.
And I guess the part where I mentioned mitigation strategies, I'd be more specific to Burlington, they're all right there, highlighted ones.
Oh, boy.
So, if you want to take a look at that, feel free.
Did you want to just read through that?
You want me to read it to you? Thanks, anyway.
How does this relate, if at all, to the flood mitigation process? It certainly should be a part of it, I would guess.
If I'm correct, for applying for those funds, that was one of the requirements, right?
I believe so.
As you have an adopted plan.
Okay.
You have to have it on record. That's kind of part of the application process, so.
Okay. I know it's in Lee County, but does this, did it change because we have a fertilizer plant being built down there? Did, did something have to change in this because of that?
No, there is, the, well, did you notice the hazard, or?
I haven't had time to look at it.
Okay. Well, there is, it's just every five years, you have to update it.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it's just happened to be two thousand ten, the last time Des Moines County had one. So, this is, this is the update. The next one would be two thousand twenty, so. It's just the timeline.
Okay. I'll put that in the reader file. If I can, can I have this, Emory?
Yeah. Anybody else want a copy?
I'll just put it in our reader.
Reader file.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Did it ever load? Yes, it did. Okay. Those of you that are interested, Larry, something for you to do before you go to bed tonight.
I have another book I have to.
Okay. All right. We have a permanent encroachment agreement with Hope Haven at six seventeen Jefferson Street for their new building.
This is for access to the building. With, this property is actually located partially in the Hundred Year Flood Plain, so they did have to elevate the main floor elevation of the building, and they elevated it a foot above that. With that, some, the entrance off of Jefferson Street and Seventh Street do need some stair ramp access, and so they are looking at installing those. A little difficult to see here, but the entrance into Jefferson would have a ramp coming from the east with stairs on the west side, and then the entrance off of Seventh Street would have a stair access as well. Those are located within the city right-of-way, approximately four feet each. They do maintain the adequate travel portion for the sidewalk. I believe at least eight feet on Jefferson and six feet on South Seventh Street, so there's still adequate travel distance around those as well.
Questions?
No.
No more questions?
No? Okay. Thank you, Eric. All right. Then we have these two ordinance, second reading of these ordinance for, for the Hy-Vee Expansion Project. Anything else we need to talk about?
Nothing's changed.
Prepare to wave. I don't think you need to go a third time.
Yeah, we do that. I don't see any.
From both of them?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would. We didn't have any questions the other night. If we don't have any questions this time, then I don't see any reason not to do that. I agree with you, Councilman Scott. All right. Christine subdivision for preliminary plat.
This is a seven-lot subdivision located off of Plank Street, just north of Agency and east of Gunnison Street. Currently, there's a, I guess, one building there somewhat used for storage. It is zoned M one, light industrial that areas. I think there's a letter in there from the owner, Don Harder, as well, who wasn't gonna be able to attend the meeting, but shows just the general area, a little more reference to where it's at. There's no new utilities for the site, but it, based on the number of lots that they're splitting, it does have to go through the preliminary and final plat process. This did go to the city planning commission, and they voted five to zero to recommend approval of the preliminary plat to the city council.
Okay.
The interest in it had been for storage or some contractors that maybe need some off-site storage. And constructing a building on this site would, based on the zoning, would meet our requirements.
I don't have a problem with that.
Are they gonna, are they gonna be required to have hard surface?
Yeah, any new construction would require hard surface paving, yep.
Yeah, and they all do have access on Plank Street.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. That lot one has a little small.
Yeah, and it has access up off of the end of Gunnison, but also on Plank Street.
Yeah, all right, I see that.
Gunnison kind of ends towards.
Really not a bad property. It's, and it's a good use, I think.
Yeah.
But, where it's located.
I think Don's done a nice job cleaning it up.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that one, counsel?
No, not for me.
Now, we have another addition to the Westbrook Estates subdivision. Two lots, I think, Eric is.
Yeah, this is a two-lot subdivision. Based on the lot size, it does have to go through our subdivision process. If they're smaller lots, they could go through a plat of survey, but these are, these two lots are intended to be connected to the lots to the west, so they're not gonna be built upon by themselves. The two lots to the west are smaller lots, I guess, for this subdivision. And based on the future development to the east with the street connecting through, this was kind of a dead area that they wouldn't be able to plat lots out anyway, so wanted to go ahead and add these, these to the existing homes to the west.
Oh, okay.
So, they're not gonna be new homes on them. They'll just be connected in larger lots for the homes that are already there.
Okay. What do you think? We're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, three hundred Washington Street.
It's kind of the ongoing, had some discussion previously on this. Do have the deeds prepared, but based on our attorney's recommendation, did need a resolution accepting the deeds. I know before it was authorizing purchase of the property, but this actually authorized the acceptance of the deeds, the actual transfer from the owner, Carl Van Hefton, so kind of a, a technical legal thing seems to be somewhat redundant, but just that acceptance word was important for him to have that deed transfer.
So, what do we do with this building then?
Downtown Partners has already agreed to purchase with some conditions. Was that twenty-five thousand that they were looking to put into a?
An escrow or deposit.
An escrow for the work to be done. That would, any sale would have to be done through the, the same type of process where we go through the public hearing with allowing other bids to come in, and that would be sort of a, a floor of what we'd be requiring of any other prospective bidders. They, once we had it, had control of the property, they would look to get in it and do a review of the structure. They're, they're willing to take it on regardless, but they'd like to be able to also show it to other prospective buyers. They've had a couple who have expressed interest, but they'd like to be able to see the, what, what it looks like on the inside. And they may be in, they may be in a position where they're able to work around a quick resale after, we have the preconditions of they need to get the roof taken care of. Somehow, that would have to be done.
That is part of the deal then.
But they may also be in a position where they have to do a larger project. They have some funds that they've, they have seventy thousand of funds that are set aside for that type of work, and then the potential to go after additional funding if there's the need to as part of that process. And I guess I wasn't even thinking about you being in a room, Steve. I don't know if there's anything additionally you wanted to add on that behalf.
And tied to this, as Steve's coming up here, we do have a set date for public hearing for March seventh for the sale of the property.
Yeah, I saw that. Steve Freevert, Director of Downtown Partners. And I want to clarify, so there's language that, that states the current owner can remove non-structural components?
Personal property.
Okay.
Typewriters and storage units.
Because, because we want to make sure there's certain things, fireplaces, light fixtures, flooring, trim, doors, that kind of thing that stays with the building.
Have you been in the building?
It's been about two years ago that I was, well, yeah, about a year and a half ago, yeah.
Thank you, Steve. So, this, you're saying it's just a formality then, as you're saying, Eric?
Yeah, it's the, this resolution, we've already authorized purchase of the building, but this is just adding the one word, acceptance of the deed, so.
Okay.
I, I don't quite understand it, but.
We just do what attorneys tell us sometimes.
Yes, which is a good thing, I suppose.
Yes, and sometimes we wonder why they tell us, but.
Yeah.
Shall we move on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Eric, are you talking about the urban revitalization?
Steph Mias.
Oh, Steph Mias. Oh, good.
So, in your packet was a resolution, and then I just had some additional information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So this resolution is something we do annually. Citizens have up until January thirty-first to put in for their tax abatement form, where they've had either new construction or residential renovation, commercial. So basically, your Exhibit A of, on the resolution, just shows all the new homes that were built that applied for this tax exemption, and that's where they have the option of doing a hundred percent tax abatement for three years, or sliding scale for ten years on residential. Then the next section shows residential renovations, they have that same option, three-year, ten-year sliding scale. Then we had a few, we had one multi-residential, family residential, so that's apartment complexes, and we did have one upper story on Jefferson, and then it looks like about five business commercial renovations that applied for the tax abatement. So basically, you approve this resolution, it gets sent over to the county. These dollar amounts here are just the estimates that the property owners gave us on what it was costing, which doesn't mean, or doesn't mean a taxable value by any means, the county determines that. So, like I said, we do this once a year. So the other sheets I did hand out to you, it's just some additional information on tax abatement. That first sheet, this comes from the county, actually, so these are exemption values, tax values, that are being abated right now. We have the two thousand fourteen year, and then the two thousand fifteen year, and then they broke it down by the type of property. So that first one, it's the ten-year commercial. Basically, last year, we abated about four million, this year, it's going to be three point one million. So overall, you can see at the bottom, the, the abatement amounts did go down this year, which is good, that means three point two million of taxable valuation went back on to our books.
Good.
So, but we just thought, this is better information if you're looking at how much annually is being abated, so. And then the second one is just a, kind of a stat sheet that we do every year, it just shows since inception of the program, which was in nineteen ninety-two, just shows the number of applicants who selected the three-year, a hundred percent, who selected the ten-years, and then again, that valuation data, and that, again, was just the numbers they gave the city, so that's not truly the tax abatement amount. But just some stats to see if you're interested, can't sleep at night, you want to look at it, so. Does anybody have any questions, or... Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Steph. Okay. Any questions?
Not for me.
All right, we have, on the consent agenda, we're setting four public hearing dates on March seventh, the plans for the two thousand sixteen HMA resurfacing project, consideration of sale of property at one fifteen Gulf Lane, consideration of sale of property at three hundred Washington Street, and a consideration of fiscal year twenty sixteen-seventeen budget, and those are taking place on March seventh. There is an appointment, and now, what else do you want to say about the last item here, Jim, about the budget?
Well, really, the last item on the budget would, we've prepared the public hearing, what Stephanie has put in the packet for, that the state forms that you see in here are based off of what was, has been presented and discussed. She, she's noted on the public hearing statement, the total estimated tax levy at the fifteen point nine-three-six-three-two, as well as, and then the Agland, the three point zero-zero-three-seven-five, those are the same as the current year. You'll see the breakdown of expenditures and revenues by category. This sort of establishes, as we go and publish this, that this will establish the maximum that we can expend in next year's budget by those various state-divided categories. They hold us accountable to that. If we go to look to have any adjustments occur from that, we have to go through a budget amendment process. We've gone through a budget amendment process, I think, the last two years, we probably have one this year, too, maybe not. Guess we haven't really talked about it, because we're not to that point to have to worry about it. It's not atypical for us to have to do an amendment at the end of the year, or by, before the end of the year.
Right. Okay.
This, the fun part about spending fifty million dollars in a budget, that includes about ten million of transfers back and forth between funds, it's, it does set our maximums. We express it in, in our budget book that will develop, is that done, or when is that done and out, the budget book?
Oh, not until this is approved.
Not until this is approved. That's a four-hundred-page document that lists out in line-item detail, and here we put it into a twelve-page state format, that's much shorter, more succinct, and probably just as incomprehensible as our four-hundred pages. The difficult part about it, it's hard to make it real.
Yeah. Any questions about this one?
Not about this.
Okay.
Okay.
No?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Are you done with that?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. That's the end of our agenda.
Wow.
Councilwoman Wilson, do you have anything to mention?
Um, I think we all got an email.
Oh, about the...
About Apollo. I thought we could discuss that a little bit. I don't know.
Yeah, Eric, you, your department has received a phone call and had some communications from that individual. I think she wanted to do a tour of the Apollo structure as well. What's, what's happened with that?
I'll have to check with Charlie. I think some of the thought was that wanted to, I guess, inquiring whether, who would be responsible for fixing it up, and whether it'd be a lease or purchase. Don't believe it'd be something where they'd be able to undertake the whole building and probably be some cost to the city at that. Our previous discussions have been with developers, looking to acquire the whole building and take it on as a project, and not have the city involved in it, so I can get some more details on our conversations that our inspectors have had.
And is that, as you're discussing that option, or thinking about what's been proposed, because she hasn't shown, she's wanting to do some of the steps afterwards, we'll have another proposal coming to us. In fact, we did request from Peter...
Schwier.
Schwier.
Miller Valentine.
With Miller Valentine, to look at this. He, he sent us an email back at the ended, very end of December, and we told him that we kind of wanted to wait till we get, got through the budget process to, for any consideration. He'd like to look at some level of an offer to purchase that had some contingencies built into it, gave him the ability to control it for a period of time. Their, their goal with that is to rehab that facility for housing, at least that was my take on it.
I think there's two options, whether it's rehab that, or demolish that and build new.
And build new housing.
Yeah, looking at both options.
They're looking at, if they're going to do a rehab, they're looking at multiple funding sources that will take a period of, of a year to, you know, to go through for applications for them, they all have different timeframes on them. There's some, some merit to that as well, and I think it makes sense to have both of them come at some point to be brought, brought forward for consideration from the council. His is, theirs is going to be more of an outright purchase with some of those contingencies built in, and I'm assuming hers is a little bit different, just from the structure of the email. In, in order for you to be able to consider, especially when they're in, doing different things, you're going to need to get some more details from both of them to be able to evaluate them in comparison to each other. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Is she coming, I assume she was from out of town somewhere, is it?
Sioux City.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Nothing tonight.
One of the people here on the Maple Street School.
Do you know what the time is on that?
It's in March, I think they've had some favorable initial reviews on it, but they don't formally hear until March, but they've heard some positive things on where they're at in the process, so...
Thank you.
I was, is that it, sir?
Oh, yes.
I, I took some time Saturday morning, going over to watch the fireman testing. I was glad I didn't have to do it, but the, the people that did do it seemed like they did pretty well. So I, I think we have some good candidates, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's good. And we want to say goodbye to Kathleen, she's leaving us.
Oh.
Kathleen Sloan, that is. Wish, wish her well, Kathleen.
Thank you very much.
Where are you going, Kathleen?
Florida.
She's moving to Florida, of all things.
That's where all the mosquitoes are.
Yeah, give her a hard time about those boots, yeah.
Well, good luck to you.
And I did want to mention, a friend of mine, whose funeral is being held tomorrow, a former employee of the Burlington City, Charles Myers, mostly known as Lindy, he worked at vehicle maintenance for a number of years, but retired quite a while ago, I don't know if any of you would have been around at that time. Really a nice man with a great family, so I wanted to express my condolences to them. Mr. Frenel?
This afternoon, was able to go over and participate in the school's meeting with Dave Lobzak, Congressman Lobzak. They were talking about the Sectors Program, which I don't know a tremendous amount about, but part of it has to do with their job training programs that they're, they're trying to implement with the students, both their construction trades, for rehabbing existing housing and the potential to build some new housing. That's a focus they have, that they're looking to begin this next school year. We've offered up, from a staff perspective at least, the idea of us participating with their efforts to try to see, see a, homes over time transition into their program for, for rehab purposes. The idea that was brought to this, to us from the school was, is we have homes that we acquire through the six fifty-seven A process, if there would be the ability to have, I think they're looking at one home a year at this point, from my understanding, to have the class rehab that, and then try to get that back out onto the market. Their goal that they've expressed is to have it go into homeownership for a low-to-moderate income family, give them an opportunity to buy a, buy a house at a much lower cost, acquisition cost, than what the open market would potentially have. That serves a couple of neat purposes for the city, if we're involved in that. One, for the, the initial and the main purpose that we would see is being able to participate and cooperate with the school for their training program for their students, but it has a, a side benefit of helping with neighborhood stabilization efforts. The more homes that we see, be able to get into a spot where we're taking, when we're taking homes through the six fifty-seven A process, those are typically homes that have been abandoned, we're not only able to get them back out in the market, but in that program, we're able to put them into a homeownership situation, which is a major benefit to the community as a whole. And we haven't had a proposal like this come yet before the, the council, but we've expressed from the staff perspective that we're strongly in support of, of having this occur, and you, you will be getting a proposal at some point, whenever they've identified what they'd like to see for a home, the idea of us donating a property into that program. We are continuing to work on union negotiations. We met with, asked me today, are, are we close to settling today?
No.
No, in fact, I think, what's the official word from today?
Mediation.
Yeah, we'll be going into a mediation process at this point. There's a, if you get to a spot where, what's, what is it called, impasse, you, you get to two steps. First is mediation, and if you can't come to some sort of a compromise there, it goes to an arbitration.
Arbitration.
So, we are at that spot with, with that union group. We still have, we have not reached to that spot, nor a settlement yet, with CWA, and we'll see where that goes as time goes on here, over the course of the next couple of weeks. It's the best I can tell you for right now.
How about please?
CWA is please.
That is CWA.
Yeah, I can't keep them straight, so that's why I have to look back at Stephanie to make sure that I get the right group. So, if you have any questions, you can certainly ask me, but...
Okay.
Is that it? Is that it? Thank you.